All right, we'll call the public hearing to order. If everybody would try to find a seat, I really appreciate it. And first on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes?
There are no changes to the agenda.
No changes for the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No approval.
Motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, the agenda is adopted. Now, the approval of the August 28th to 14, 2014 minutes. Are there any changes or corrections, commissioners? Bob, any corrections? No. All right. Okay. Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. The approval of the minutes is approved. Now, we're on to council members. Council Lady Weiner, I saw. Would you like to go now, or?
I have nothing to say.
You have nothing to say?
Isn't that worse?
Council Lady. That's odd. Not for you, for us council, former council members. Council Lady Langstrom, would you like to?
Thank you, and good afternoon to my former council member, Mr. Greg Atkins. Good afternoon Chairman McLean, and to all, oh, my present colleague now, Councilman Walter Hunt. I'm here on behalf of Mending Way. They're coming for a policy change, and we still need to do some talking, get the neighborhood a little more comfortable with what's being said, what's being done, and I'd like to ask for a one-minute, a one-meeting deferral, please. And I think you have a letter from Mending Way asking also for a one-meeting deferral.
And I believe that's, Rick, will you update?
Yeah, I just want to confirm that with the applicant, if that's okay.
Okay. That's okay. Will you have it on our deferral list?
Okay. Thank you very much, and hope it's not a long night for you.
Thank you, Council Lady. We appreciate it. I did see another councilman walk in. Councilman Jerry Maney. Mr. Maney, would you like to come up and speak? Welcome, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all. I'm here on behalf of, Councilman Matthews is out of town on today, and we have a bill that's before you. Would you like for me to wait till they come up on the agenda?
Yeah, this is only time for you to speak, right?
Okay.
Yeah, only you, Councilman.
Okay. We're in support of relocation of a corporation from the Germantown area for R.T. Goodwin to go to the Bordeaux area. And I'm here in support of that relocation and rezoning. This is historic, that we have never had a corporation relocate its headquarters from one area town to another area town in the Bordeaux area. The churches, we spoke to all the pastors, we've spoken to the community leaders, we had a community meeting, Councilman Matthews had, along with myself, and we had strong support for this corporate relocation, to bring jobs in the area, economic development in the area, right on Clarksville Pike Highway. So I stand in support of that rezoning for R.T. Goodwin to relocate its headquarters from the Germantown area to Clarksville Pike for that rezoning. And I thank you so much for your time, and it's good to see you, Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll just make a clarification.
That's item number nine on your agenda.
Item number nine on the agenda. And I think this is my first time ever speaking before you in seven years being on the council, so I thank you.
We appreciate that. Only his first time. That's good. Thank you, Councilman. Any other council members? I didn't see any, any other council members. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Nashville Next update.
Mr. Chairman, we have, following up our workshop at the last meeting, there was extensive discussion by the commission on the process the commission wished to go through in terms of community plan updates. I've asked Catherine Withers to go through several options, you had this in your staff report, but options for the commission to consider in terms of moving forward. As you know, we have been moving forward at the, towards a spring adoption process, and so she'll go through the options with you.
Hi, Catherine Withers. All right, so we'll talk through the options. And just to remind you where we are, we are in the middle of Phase Four, making the policy decisions, and this is going to determine the direction the plan goes in. So we've just wrapped up a series of 25 meetings where we asked people to pick their preference for where future growth goes. And if you haven't made your choice, it's not too late. Our website is open until September 15th, so you can log on there and fill out the survey. And to remind you, there were three different features, business as usual, and then two interventions focusing downtown and Pikes, and then centers with adjacent infill. So our staff is currently working on compiling the input and preparing the preferred feature that'll be finalized after September 15th. And then we will begin the work of translating these features into the community plan policies. So then, the question before you is how do we engage the community in that preferred feature and the community plan land use policy work? And looking back over our series of events that we've had leading up to this, we found that we've had much more success with larger meetings where there's a lot of promotion and buildup around it. For example, the kickoff had 400 attendees. Then we moved into Phase Two, where we had six meetings throughout the city where we only had 30 to 60 attendees at each meeting. Phase Three, growth mapping, once again, we had that excitement around the big event. So we had a Saturday event that we had 250 people. Then we had some follow-up. We had a weeknight meeting that had 100 attendees. And we've also seen that same participation in Phase Four where we had the community conversations. The larger events, we had many more attendees, 300 at the Affordable Housing and gentrification, 100 at Culture and Placemaking. And then the lounges where we went out throughout the county, 25 meetings, we had an average of 10 to 25 attendees per event. And throughout the process, we've had significant participation online. And then also where we went, we held book of planner meetings where our staff went out to already scheduled meetings with neighborhood groups or community organizations and community festivals. So we have four different options to talk to you about. The first being a main event, which would be one day, a big meeting, big event. It would actually have two sessions, noon and evening. Our presentation would be two-part. It would be similar to the community conversations where there's a presentation, and then there's table discussion around the preferred feature, and then also the detailed community plan policy changes. And then we would supplement that with the book of planner presentations to community groups where large change is being proposed. And then we'd also have the online tools. Option two is that big event.
Option one was the one we talked about at the workshop.
That's right. That is right. Thank you. And we'll talk timelines. We can look at all four of these together at the end. So option two is that big main event, and then four more held in roughly the four quadrants of the county, so you'd have a total of five events. We talked about this with our Community Engagement Committee last week. That's the group of neighborhood leaders who are responsible for getting the word out to their groups, and they endorse this approach. So it's the same meeting format as option one. We'd hold the kickoff in the central location, and then the four more events. And then we would follow up with the book of planners in areas where we didn't, we didn't get participation, to make sure we're reaching out to those areas, and then we'll have the online tools. And then option three, expanded involvement. This is a more traditional approach, where we would go out and work with the different, 14 different sub-areas. In our newer plans, hopefully we could accomplish that in two meetings. In the older areas, older plans, that's nine, three meetings. This takes a much longer time period. It's going to add a year to the process, and we'd also have online tools. And then option four is to make this a vision-only plan, where we have the preferred vision, but then we do not take it as adopted land use policy into the 14 different plans. So the preferred feature is aspirational, and then that would be a goal that we would, staff would work with communities to work that into their updates into the future. We'd propose one central meeting, book of planners, and online tools. Oh, and I did want to add with this, this is similar to how the last general plan was, Concept 2010. And so that countywide vision gets lost over time as you're, you know, 10 years past it, updating individual community plans and trying to work that vision in. All right, so with all these options, we're starting the Community Engagement kickoff in October. So October to December would be our, our main push with options one and two. Option three, as I said, that takes it into March of 2016. We would, with option one, we've released the draft in January. Option two, February. Option three, that puts it out to 2016. And four, that's in 2014. So with all these, you can see the dates with the options one, two, and four, wrap it up in the spring, and option three would add a year.
Yeah, both Catherine and I reviewed that. All the draft plan release and hearing dates are 15, not 14.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. So option two is the option that was endorsed by our Neighborhood Leader Group, and that's the path that we would recommend embarking on.
Well, we, thank you very much. We had a very robust discussion, Mr. Chairman, I remember, in our workshop, and we, is there discussion on these options?
Well, I think, we've got four options, and I think it's maybe more where we'd have to have, need to have a workshop. When this was presented to the administration, that we could do this in the House, because we didn't have the funds and the operating budget, capital budget, that we could do it probably for about a third to half of what it would cost if we did it outside of the staff. And also, we wouldn't get the same involvement with the outside company that came in. And I think the administration bought onto it, knowing that this could be done at a lower dollar, and it also could be brought in before this administration goes out of office on September the 1st of 2015. So before I would vote on it, I'd like to have a discussion before I could vote on option three, which puts it nine months past the administration's leaving. So I'll just say that, and I'll hear from the other commissioners, but that's, that's my opinion right now.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Regee?
Just have a question, and I apologize since I wasn't at the workshop. But, so, so these are four options on how we go about, as part of the Nashville Next process, go about all, not only approving the plan, but approving updates to the community plans that reflect the Nashville Next plan.
The preferred feature, right.
Okay. And these dates, the draft plan release, that's of the Nashville Next plan?
That's correct.
Would there also be drafts of the community plan amendments for each one of those?
Yes.
Okay. And they would all be heard at one time at the hearing date?
Right.
Great, thank you.
And the focus was to get the plans all coordinated so that the commission and the community could begin implementation, not be working on updating
Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, I suppose that if we adopted the option two, that's the neighborhood leaders seem to be comfortable with, as well as staff, if for whatever reason we were not prepared to vote in May 2015, we could defer action at that point to the next meeting. It's not like if we adopt this, we can't move that date. Is that right?
That'd be great. Any, any other discussion? Chairman, you mentioned a workshop. Is that before the?
Before I would vote for option three, I would defer to, I'd ask for deferral on it, if that's, if that's what the motion is. Because I'm not prepared to extend this out beyond what my commitment was when we talked to administration.
Commissioner Clifton?
I would agree with that. I think it needs to be, if at all possible, resolved during this administration's tenure, as they've been, been, been involved in all parts of it, and the council members who are now in office may want to have input and have more information than a newly-elected council would. But, but I'm prepared to go with the staff recommendation, option two. It makes sense to me, particularly if we get down to a couple of things in mid-May that need a little more attention, we can always move it another meeting. So I'm prepared at the right time to move, if we adopt option two.
I'd second that motion, option two.
All right, there's been a proper motion in second. Any other discussion? I know that not every commissioner.
Let me say this, knowing that that May 14th date may move into June or possibly early July, but no later than May-July.
With some flexibility on the last date. I know personally, when we were in the workshop, we asked, a question was asked about the, some of the sub-area plans would not have to change that much. Is that true?
Yeah.
That's correct. We're finding that there may not be huge amounts of change. It might be, it's smaller than what we had originally thought.
Okay. Any other discussion? There's been a motion in second to adopt the staff's recommendation on option number two. Any other discussion? I will make sure we get this right. It's a big deal. With seeing no other discussion, all in favor of option two, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Option two is adopted with some flexibility on the last date. Thank you. So, thank you very much. Now, we are on the agenda for item number F, which is items for deferral withdrawal. Bob?
Yes, there are several items for deferral, starting with item number two, 2014 S.P.-041-001. This is a request.
Excuse me. Item one, I think, had been requested to be on deferral also.
Yeah.
One meeting deferral.
That one's been added to the deferral, okay. Item number one is 2013 S.P.-048-001. This is the Hillwood Court at Nashville West rezoning request. This is a request to rezone from R-40 and RS-40 to S.P. zoning for properties located at 6809 and 6813 Charlotte Pike, at the southwest corner of Charlotte Pike and Old Charlotte Pike, 3.07 acres, to permit up to 40 dwelling units. This is a request for a one-meeting deferral.
One meeting.
Okay. Next item is item number two, 2014 S.P.-041-001. This is a request to rezone from RM-20 to S.P. zoning for properties located at 1212 Hawkins Street, 1119 and 1121 Sigler Street, to permit up to 45 multifamily units. This is a request to defer to the September 25th Planning Commission meeting. Item number four, 2014 S.-170-001, the Earhart Road subdivision. This is a request for concept plan approval to create 49 clustered lots and open space on properties located at 3110, 3112, 3114 Earhart Road, and at 5545 Chestnut Trail. The recommendation is to defer to the September 25th Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item five, 2014 C.P.-008-002, North Nashville Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend the North Nashville Community Plan by changing the community character policy from urban neighborhood maintenance policy to an urban neighborhood evolving policy for properties located at 4101, 4103, and 4105 Albion Street, and 930 and 932 42nd Avenue North. The request from the applicant was to defer to the October 9th Planning Commission meeting. I think that was slightly different than what the council member mentioned, was that's a two-meeting deferral.
Hold on, Bob. Is, Council Lady, is that okay? The two, two-meeting deferral for that?
That's perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Next item is item 6A, 2014 C.P.-010-002, the Green Hills Midtown Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan to add special policy language to the suburban neighborhood maintenance policy that applies to property located at 2001 Woodmont Boulevard to support the continuation of an existing non-residential use. The recommendation is to defer to the October 9th Planning Commission meeting. And the associated rezoning with that case is item 6B, 2014 S.P.-019-001. This is a request to rezone from R-40 to S.P. zoning for property located at 2001 Woodmont Boulevard to permit physical therapy, medical office, and associated uses. The request is to defer to the October 9th Planning Commission meeting. And the last item on the deferral list is item 17, 2014 S.-178-001. This is a request for final plat approval to create four lots within the Eastwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District on properties located at 313 and 315 Manchester Avenue. The request is to defer to the September 25th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Bob. You've heard the deferrals, and I'm going to go through the list again, and, Bob, correct me if I'm mistaken, it's item one, item two, four, five, 6A, 6B, and item number 17.
That's correct.
Deferrals. So you've heard the deferrals, commissioners. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Some.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of the deferrals, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, deferrals are made. Bob, we're on the consent agenda.
Okay, before I get to the consent agenda, as information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with a decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ assert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following items, please raise your hand and let the commission know if you'd like one of these items removed from the consent agenda. First item on consent is item number three, 2014.
We've had a request to pull in.
That one, okay. Next item on the consent agenda would be, the first item on the consent agenda then would be item number eight, 2012 S.P.-014-002. This is a request to amend a portion of a specific planned district for properties located at 200 and 202 Oceola Avenue to permit up to 13 dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is item number 10, 2014 S.P.-065-001. This is a request to rezone from IR to S.P. zoning for properties located at 1309 Third Avenue North, 1304 Fourth Avenue North, to permit up to 256 multifamily units. The staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including the amended condition at your desk, to clarify that the number of building stories, height, placement, and elevations are the exclusive purview of the Metro Historic Zoning Commission, and disapprove without all of those conditions. Next item on the consent agenda is item 11A, 2014 S.P.-066-001. This is a request to rezone from CF to S.P. zoning for property located at 1707 Broadway, and 109, 115, 119, and 121 17th Avenue South, to permit a mixed-use building of up to 25 stories in height. And staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next item is the associated case, 11B, 2001 UD-002-009. This is a request to cancel a portion of the Music Row Urban Design Overlay District for properties located at 1707 Broadway, and at 109, 115, 119, and 121 17th Avenue South. Staff recommendation is to approve, subject to the approval of the associated zone change request. Next item is item 12, 2014 Z.-051 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from RS-15 to AR-2A zoning for property located at 4455 Cato Road. The staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 13, 2014 Z.-052 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from CL to CS zoning for a portion of property located at 2706 Old Lebanon Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. Next item is item 14, 85-85P-001. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for, for a portion of the Brentwood Commons Planned Unit Development Overlay District on property located at 750 Old Hickory Boulevard, to permit the development of two five-story office buildings. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. And under Other Business, the next item on consent is item 18, a new employee contract for Peter Bang. Staff recommendation is to approve. And item 19 is a new employee contract for Singay Saliki. Staff recommendation is to approve. And item 20 is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of up to $50,000 from the fiscal year 2015 Advanced Planning and Research Fund to utilize MP&amp;F to provide critical community access and engagement tools and techniques necessary to develop recommendations and strategies for the Nashville Davidson, Nashville Davidson County General Plan. Staff recommendation is to approve. And the last item under, on the consent agenda is, item 24, is to accept the director's report and approve the administrative items.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioners, on the consent agenda, there's items number eight, 10, 11A, 11B, 12, 13, 14, 18, 19, 20, and 24. Now, 17 was deferred. Any other questions on, on the consent agenda? Been a motion in second, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
I need to recuse myself from matter number 14 before we vote.
That's right. Thank you, Commissioner Haynes. It'll be noted that you abstain on item number 14. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, consent agenda has been adopted. Next on the agenda is item number one. Oh, nope, item one was deferred, so the next item is item number three. We're on the public hearing now.
We have staff, staff presentation, and this was pulled at the request of one of the commissioners.
All right, item number three.
Hold on one second. We'll get, if everybody could, if you're not in here for business, then please step outside the room so we can conduct our meeting. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Item number three is a zoning request for West Plan. The request is to rezone from R-15 to SPR to permit up to 322 residential dwelling units. The property is highlighted in red. This is located in Bellevue, just north of I-40 and west of Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Current zoning is R-15. The policy is T3 suburban mixed-use corridor and T3 suburban neighborhood evolving, along with conservation policy. The site plan that has been submitted by the applicant indicates 11 multifamily buildings being developed along the north. being developed along the north and the east portion of the site, along with parking and garages for the property. Approximately 16 out of 30 acres have slopes 20% or greater, and that's considered steep slopes. And of that, only about three acres will be disturbed. Slopes of 25% or greater will not be disturbed at all. Approximately half the site will remain as is. What you can see up here is the proposal of the site plan, the property that's highlighted in red, and the green area is the conservation policy. And I'll get you another slide that zooms up here. But as you can see, the area for conservation policy that's 25% or greater towards the west portion of the property is being maintained. So the development is going along the north and the east side of the property, and not on the higher slopes to the west and south. This is a close-up view of that. The applicant has submitted an elevation. These multifamily buildings will be three stories and four stories. This is the side of three stories and four stories. The cross-section indicates how these buildings will work with the site and the slopes. You can see three stories on the left-hand side and four on the right. Again, the clubhouse will also do this as well. The purpose of this SP is to protect the steep slopes. The Planning Commissioners may remember that this item was deferred as a rezoning request a couple of times. The applicant did submit in a site plan, so you can see where the development would be. A majority of the steep slopes will not be disturbed. The steep slopes and existing vegetation will buffer the surrounding properties, and the proposed layout does minimize grading. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions.
Thank you. This item is now open for public hearing. Council lady, come on up.
So that was short-lived. I said I wasn't going to talk, and here I am. I wanted to share with everyone that when the builders came to me initially, asking this be rezoned as a base zoning, I required that it be an SP specifically because of the slopes, and because we wanted to maintain control over the specifics of what they did with this property, because it's absolutely beautiful as you drive out west on Interstate 40. We held two community meetings. Of the two community meetings, we had a total of four people that came, and of the four people that came, no one was opposed to it. In fact, one of them came wanting to sell their property. And so we've had no feedback at all that has been negative. Everything has been quite positive. This is a project that is probably in the best interest of Bellevue right now. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council lady. And before we get into the applicant and the public hearing, is there anyone? We're just going to see if, is there anyone here in opposition of this particular item? Well, seeing none, the applicant, would you like?
I just want to speak about the slopes, just because that seemed to be a question. As the council member had indicated originally, a zone change request had been made for this property for an RM20 zoning, which would have theoretically allowed 600 units. Obviously, there was no way to do that. So the Planning Commission staff basically said, you know, and the council member, you really need to do a specific plan on this so we can see exactly how these units would fit. And so when I did the grading on this, I stepped these buildings in a manner to really minimize the amount of disturbance. As was indicated, there's about 16 acres that would be considered severe slopes. There's only three of those that are being touched. There are no retaining walls on this project the way it's designed. There are slopes in excess of 25%, zero of which are being touched. So this is a very good layout on this piece of property. It's in a great location for this use. It's obviously recommended approved by the staff. It was on the consent agenda, but I know that there was a question about the steep slopes, and those have been addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, any one?
There are no Del Rossoles on this floor.
In opposition? We'll go ahead and, seeing nobody here to speak in opposition, well, the public hearing is closed. Now, we're on to the commissioners. Andre.
Make a motion to approve. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thanks. I was just interested in the slopes, and just so that we're, I appreciate all the work that everybody's done to change the path so that we could protect what everybody wanted. I just wanted to speak on that because we really want to be careful about protecting our steep slopes and out in that area, especially where a lot of people have talked about what their wish for the future is, and that Green Hills get kept and that Bellevue stays the way we, you know, is what's left that we can protect, we should. And so I was concerned about this, that it, still, the 70-foot change in elevation seems like a lot, but I understand how the buildings have been stairced out. Thank you for asking for, for making the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, with staff recommendations.
There's been a motion to approve, staff recommendation, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no? One no. Passes.
Ready? Right. Item 7 is a request to amend the Nolanville Pike Car Wash SP. This is located just south of Old Hickory Boulevard, adjacent to the Walmart Planned Unit Development. The request is specifically to amend the SP to permit CS sign standards, as well as include a LED-type sign. Staff is recommending disapproval. This is a view of the site. It is built for the SP. The zoning is, again, is specific plan, and it permits a car wash. This is the approved council plan. The plan and the council bill included a condition that all signage shall be monument style and consist with the CL zoning sign standards of the Metro Zoning Code, so a monument-style sign with height of the sign being per CL zoning, as well as any building signs being per CL zoning. This is the sign that was approved with the final site plan. You can see it's a monument. It is tall, not the type of monument sign we typically think of, but it does meet the height requirements of the CL zoning district. This is the sign that was actually built, so the sign that was built is not in compliance with what was approved, so I just wanted to point that out. The policy is suburban community center. The policy has some language on signage. It basically says that it would support signs that do not cause serious distractions. As we know, typically, these type of LED signs are known to cause more distraction than static signs. This is the sign that they're requesting, so in the middle area of the columns, they're asking that there be a digital board. Another thing, the reason staff is recommending disapproval is that it circumvents the zoning code. As you may recall, a couple of years ago, we passed, or council passed, an amendment to the zoning code to permit all types of car uses or automobile uses back into CS and certain zoning districts with conditions. As you can see up at the top, car wash is included in that, and in these zoning districts at the top, these are the ones that have conditions, and they're permitted outright in the industrial zoning districts. The conditions of the, includes various conditions, but it specifically prohibits digital signs and billboards. So what they're proposing is to permit a digital sign, when today you couldn't do that under current zoning. So the request circumvents the zoning code. So in conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval as the request is not consistent with the policy and circumvents existing zoning requirements.
Thank you. This item is now open for public hearing. Is the applicant in the audience? Please come forward. It's not the applicant. That's not the applicant. Is there?
He's been called for the applicant.
Is the applicant not in the audience? Anybody in opposition? Anybody in support? Well, first, we need to, anybody in support of the, anybody in opposition? Well, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Chairman?
Make a motion to disapprove, staff recommendations.
You've heard the motion. There's been a motion to disapprove, and a second. Any other further discussion? All in favor of disapproval, say aye. Oppose, no. Items disapproved. We are now on to Item Number 9.
So this is Item Number 9 on your agenda, Roy T. Goodwin Office. This is a request to rezone from RS40 to SP IND to permit a building contractor supply office, storage yard, and maintenance building. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The subject property is currently zoned RS40, and is located south of the intersection of Bradley Parkway and Clarksville Pike. Surrounding zoning is also RS40, RS15, and PUD. The subject property is currently under the T2 Rural Neighborhood Maintenance Policy, and the proposed SP is not consistent with that policy, which is a residential policy, whereas the SP is proposing office and industrial uses. Also, to point out, this property is surrounded by all neighborhood maintenance policy. The different colors you see here are the different transects. So the yellow, which the subject property is under, is a T2 rural. The pink on the southwest side, as well as the east side, is a T3 suburban neighborhood maintenance policy. And to the south, we have a T4 urban neighborhood maintenance policy. The SP proposes a building contractor supply use, including office building, outside storage yard, and maintenance building. The site is relatively flat, as it has served as a fill site for nearly a decade under a mass grading permit. Access to the site is proposed from Clarksville Pike. The office building as proposed is just a bit over 5,000 square feet and is oriented towards Clarksville Pike, and it includes two rows of parking in front of the building. The maintenance building and outside storage yard are located behind the proposed office building. The site is surrounded by residentially zoned property, and staff recommends Type C landscape buffers along both east and west site boundaries be included if this is approved. Resident, or, sorry, rendering submitted by the applicant show a one-story office building, as you see here. And here are some site photos. This is from Clarksville Pike looking at the current entrance, and a little bit further down where you can see some of the current activity on the site. And in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval as the SP is not consistent with the rural neighborhood maintenance policy. Thank you.
Thank you. This item is now open for public hearing. Is the applicant in the audience? Councilman, please. Go ahead, councilman.
Are you part of, you're not part of the applicant? I'm here in support. Should I not speak of having? I'm a, councilman, I'm a novice here, it's my first time here, so I.
Yeah, yeah, we'll let the applicant go first, councilman. You'll have 10 minutes to speak, and you have the option to keep two minutes of that for rebuttal.
Yes, sir. Thank you. My name is Mike Roy with Loson Associates, representing Roy T. Goodwin Construction. One point of clarification, I'm sure you're all aware, but just because I'm an anal engineer, the reference to contractor supply is indicative of a retail component. There is no retail component. This is the proposed relocation of the existing Roy T. Goodwin Construction office, currently located on Third Avenue North, over near Germantown. Just a few quick points. Councilman Maynard and Councilman Matthews were kind enough to help us facilitate a public meeting, I don't know, about two weeks ago, which was well-attended by the neighborhood. Several of the pastors included have been engaged with us during the process. After that public meeting, everyone was in support. There are a few topics that came up during that conversation, and with my time now, I would like to go ahead and try to address those preemptively, and I will preserve some of my time for rebuttal if necessary. Traffic being number one. As I think most of you are aware, Clarksville Pike is soon to be widened to a five-lane section. Per my personal conversation with Tennessee Department of Transportation, right-of-way acquisition is to begin, I believe, next month. So we would submit that capacity will certainly not be an issue. With regard to the land use policy, as Councilman Maynard stated more formally eloquently than I could, and as the neighbors who attended our public meeting indicated, there's been a desire to attract commercial to the Bordeaux neighborhood for some time. And we, it's my belief that those who attended and who spoke positively about this proposal see this as an opportunity to begin that process. Given the proximity to Bradley Parkway and the fact that Clarksville Highway will soon be widened to five lanes, I would respectfully suggest that the land use policy might be in need of, for the review, or additional review. Additionally, if you note, the architectural design of the building was intentionally prepared so as to, as close as possible, replicate that of the, of a residential facility. Obviously, it's not, but to the extent we could, we have been cognizant of view from the street, trying to create the right sort of facade and the right sort of aesthetic so as to not be a negative for the neighborhood. Above all, my client, and my client is here, Mr. Glenn Goodwin, wishes to be a good neighbor. He's made that very clear from the very beginning. And with that, I will relinquish the floor unless you have questions for me this time.
Thank you. You have two minutes for rebuttal. Now, is there anybody in the audience in favor of the proposal? Come on, councilman. And anyone else wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and line up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for this body in this commission. Let me go quickly through, Councilman Matthews and I have been working since 2007 on how do we deal with economic development along Clarksville Highway, especially working with Senator Thelma Harper on the expansion of Clarksville Pike. They've been talking about expanding it for the last 20 years. And finally, the state of Tennessee, and TDOT, is going to begin expansion of Clarksville Pike from a two-lane, to a four-lane highway that will be coming running from Bradley Parkway all the way down. This particular property is located next to, very close to Bradley Parkway. And so if you look at the limited number of houses that are actually in that area, even though it's residential, you only have three or four houses that are actually there. What Councilman Matthews and I did is we went up to Fair Mead, which is the most densely populated area next to this location, and we talked to the neighbors, which happens to have a lot of pastors that live there. And we had a meeting with them and talked with them one-on-one, and then we had an informal gathering. I did have an informal gathering with those pastors to talk about this particular development. Currently, RT Goodwin is located in Germantown, which has a lot of residential development around its office. A lot of density, high density there in Germantown, to the point where they're looking to move to someplace that is more similar, that is just like this location here. And so when we were approached by that, we went and talked to the pastors, we went and talked to Temple, we went and talked to Cathedral Appreise. Temple has over 5,000 members, Cathedral Appreise has over 3,000 members. Councilman Matthews met with Temple, I met with Cathedral Appreise. We had a meeting, I had a meeting with Cathedral Appreise and its membership and its pastor, and they were in agreement in support of having this relocation of a corporate headquarters from Germantown to this location. We then had a public hearing at Cathedral Appreise, where we had a public meeting, and we sent notice to everyone, and it came forth, and during that meeting, we had unanimous support of those who attended the meeting in support of this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, councilman. Anyone else wishing to speak in support, please come to the microphone. Now, seeing no other people in support, anyone in opposition, please come to the microphone. Please line up if you'd like to speak. You have two minutes to speak. Please state your name and your address. Please come forward.
My name is Herman Beasley, and I live directly across the street from this proposed It's in a dead man, a blind curb, you can't see. The speed limit is 50 miles an hour. Anybody coming from town is coming in a blind curb, and those trucks pull out at 2 miles an hour. It's a pretty dangerous situation. But all these meetings that have been proposed, I live there. And... But all these meetings that have been proposed, I live there and nobody's informed us of any meetings, private or public. So I definitely oppose it.
Thank you. If you guys, if everyone could line up behind the microphone, that'd be great. Hopefully we can.
My name is Willis Martin and I live at 4482. And I heard Mr. Maynard talking about the traffic. We don't know whether the traffic, when they're gonna do this, when the traffic, they're gonna build this here. But those trucks gonna cause a lot of problems, as they say, in the blind curve in the north and we do not want no commercial in the residential area. So I vote no.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gwendolyn Vincent. If you'd told me a few minutes ago I'd be here speaking to this group.
Please state your address.
But, pardon.
Your address, too?
My address is 4824 Fairmead Court. I've lived there for 30 years. We have a beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. It's wonderful and what I understand, maybe not all of the details about what you're talking about, but I don't think it's a very good idea at all, talking about putting this building and traffic and everything. And I definitely would be against very, unfortunately, I didn't attend the meetings. I had heard through the grapevine something about a meeting. But when you really don't know about all of these things, and so that I was not fortunate to hear what they did at Kings Lane and the cathedral. But friends that I've kind of talked with who knew as much as I knew about this, we were not for this at all. So we definitely would vote no for this.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Clarence Barnett. My address is 6215 Homeland Drive. That's across Bradley Parkway. Actually, I'm not sure if this is the same area that when it was first, when the gentleman was first grading the area, we, several residents stopped and asked him what he was planning on putting there. We were told it was a residential area that was supposed to be there. I think the state or the county, somebody stopped them to grade the area up to grade. And I just found, I just found out today that this is the plan for the area. The council has already disapproved the zoning for this particular plan and I just would like to put my support behind the council to disapprove the commercial placement of a commercial business in our residential area.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? If y'all would please line up, it'd be great. State your name and address, sir.
Right, just in time. Inman Odie 6211 Homeland Drive. I pass the site every day, two or three times sometimes. And it was originally proposed, and this may have already been said, but I'm repeating it, that, and the community agreed to it, to backfill that big gulch that was right there where the property was. Thought that was a good idea. The owners proposed that they were gonna do that in order to develop some upscale housing. They presented pre-pitches and kept them on the property for several years, showing the kind of redevelopment that was gonna happen. Now I understand that they're trying to change to make it a commercialized office operation for the construction site, which would lower the values of the property in the area. I don't think any homes next to it, near it, around it, are not in a 100,000 up range. It's one or two older properties that's been in the neighborhood many years, but a lot of new construction has happened in that general area. So from Kings Lane to the Bradley Boulevard, a lot of investments have been and are being made and even extended on out as far as the new development and Fontanae old area. So I think it would be, and I'm a retired real estate developer, I have a little understanding of how these things affect the value of the homes. So I would object to it strenuously to let that happen. I do recall that because there is an interconnection, sorry.
Thank you, sir.
At the interstate there, that there was some proposals for multifamily complexes with office, other facilities. But I would have proposed that too if it comes up.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I declare, oh, public hearing is not closed. You have two minutes for rebuttal. Apologize.
I don't think I'll need to. I'd just like to reiterate, Roy T. Goodwin Construction's been a corporate citizen of Nashville for 30-plus years, located on Third Avenue North, as Councilman Matthews stated, a very dense, transitioning neighborhood, but still a great deal of residential, actually Lotson Associates offices about two blocks away. Given the nature of their operation, they're out early prior to the peak and back early prior to the afternoon peak. So they're very unobtrusive when it comes to traffic and noise. Again, we're very close and we can speak to that with some firsthand knowledge. So we respectfully request your kind consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, I declare the public hearing closed. Why don't we start on this side? Councilman Hunt, Walter.
Thank you. I don't have any comments. I don't have any. I don't have any.
Okay. Commissioner Blacksheen?
Sure. As a native and current resident of Bordeaux, I'm really familiar with the area and the adjacent areas and I do appreciate the significance of the relocation of a company to the area and the investment in the area. I also appreciate the design of the facade to look like a residential structure so it would appear more seamless within the area. And while I understand the desire to bring economic investment to Bordeaux, I don't know if this, if a contractor supply office or storage yard is the right way to do it, especially in this particular area of Bordeaux. And being familiar with the area, just the thought of this moving in seems really inconsistent with the area, which I think is reflected in the fact that it's inconsistent with the current policy. So I would lean toward disapproval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we're in a position to look at the current policy and determine whether this is consistent with it. And the one thing that intrigued me, I suppose despite the staff's recommendation, is the question of whether this area needs a policy update. But then I sort of asked the question, well, why aren't we, why aren't we looking at an amendment to the community plan and a policy change before a rezoning? So I'm not sure we have much of a choice as a commission to, you know, because this doesn't meet the policy, but to follow staff's recommendation.
Stuart.
One of the continuing underlying issues of our zoning decisions and zoning in Davidson County is the, what I have finally come to believe is the, the undercapacity of our zoned industrial, that we probably need overall, as an overall county, more industrial zoning. Didn't always believe that, but I do now. And if we want to make Clarksville Highway all through here industrial, I guess we could with a look at a plan, at a plan amendment. I don't know if I see the need for more overall industrial zoning, which this is, except it's not more, it's just moving from one industrial zone to creating another one because it's in an industrial zone. Germantown is multi-use and it's a conforming use. I don't know if this is exactly where we would do it, but my biggest problem, and I understand a lot of good thought and work has gone into it, and I also know this specific company to be a very good corporate citizen, that's really not at issue. I just don't know that we, I think we'd be setting a precedent for a great deal of Clarksville Highway to ultimately go industrial, which I'm not sure we're quite ready to do. So I appreciate the sincere arguments on both sides, but I'm not prepared to vote for this this time. I think the staff probably got this one right.
Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Chairman?
No comments.
All right. Jessica?
I definitely defer to the rest of the commissioners in terms of how we review this relative to policy. The only question I did have is, I did not, I was not aware about the expansion of Clarksville Pike. And I have to say, a five-lane road coming down from Bradley does lend itself to thinking about different uses beyond residential. And, you know, I can see the appeal of a location like this off a five-lane road for, you know, something like a construction supply yard and not with the proximity to Bradley Parkway and everything. So, you know, I think I would be in favor of kind of the discussion around the policy change, but agreeing that we should not go forward with something that is against current policy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Jeff, I apologize. You were leaning back.
Sorry.
Commissioner.
Right. Thank you for skipping me.
No comment. Andrea?
I think we would have to, I would definitely think we have to review the whole plan with a big open session with the public because, you know, West End has residential right next to 440. So I think five-lane roads don't necessarily preclude residential, but I think whatever it is, whatever the view and the perspective that needs to come here needs to be a big public debate if we're gonna change this. And I wanted to ask a question about the five lanes. Is that in our complete street? I'm sort of surprised it was changed to five lanes and I guess maybe I shouldn't have been.
They are running, I mean, the five lanes is in the major street plan as a, I mean, it'll be designed as a complete street, yeah. Counselman, raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to go back to a thought I had, we don't want to hear the other commissioners. It's the Bordeaux White Creek's community plan refers to some terms of rural neighborhood that's characterized by the development pattern. And anybody that know that area out there, you know, you've got Bordeaux, which is very little rural of it, and I was trying to figure out where does non-rural Bordeaux stop and where does, if it happens, rural White Creek begin? They've always had those two together, but there's a big difference in the terrain in the uses. Totally different. However, even if they come to four lanes on Bradley Parkway, you're still talking about residential houses all the way down the lower the road. So they'll end up buying a lot of people's front yards just to widen it. So when you put all those factors together, particularly when you just talk about, because I don't see anything rural about Bordeaux, let me put it that way. You go way over by Drex branch, which is not part of Bordeaux probably, it's rural over there, but all of Bordeaux is residential, it's not rural. There's no cornfields. And I think Rick enlightened me the other day when we have a meeting about, what, 15 definitions, 15 definitions of rural?
Yeah, the rural here only applies on this property and really the property adjacent. If you can see on the map there, it's the area there in yellow or light green, whatever it shows. You have suburban across the street and more urban neighborhoods to the south of that. So it's not that it applies over this entire area, it only applies to a portion of this area. But all of it does include residential neighborhoods as opposed to non-residential uses.
My point, we don't know whether the Biden line is. So what I'm just simply saying then, I think, I agree with what the commissioners are saying, we may have to just take some more, take it back to the joint board, look at it some more because I don't think that we could vote on this tonight.
Is there a motion? Call for motion? We'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we not vote on this at this time, but I would like to see if further status done on it because I'm very interested in rural versus non-rural. And that's why I would think that I'd like to see if we can go defer, vote, look at it again so we can kind of determine, have a more sound definition of what this is.
Is your motion an indefinite deferral or a one-meeting or?
I would like to see a one-meeting deferral.
What information are you looking for?
Well, I'd like to see what, we're talking about a big vast area of land.
No, we're only talking about a very small area of land for rural. It's the area there on the map that shows on the screen.
Yeah, I see that, but what I'm saying is, isn't it not referred to as rural? The land use policy says character of rural neighborhood is characterized by the development pattern?
Right.
So it's rural. It could be perceived as rural, let me put it that way. And I think that needs to be cleared up.
So there's a motion for a one-meeting deferral. Is there a second?
Can I ask a question?
Well, really, before we get into discussion, but yes, Commissioner, you can absolutely ask questions since there really are, there's no second.
I guess I'm just.
Use your microphone, please.
I guess my question is, one meeting doesn't seem to me like it would be sufficient if we are having this conversation about kind of an overall, you know, policy change or a plan change? So I'm not sure, and I guess I don't know the process for getting the plan changed underway and is.
The plan, a plan amendment here, a plan amendment, there's two ways. One would be part of the National Next process, which we'll be looking at that in light of the preferred future. The policy that would be required for this use to go in would be a district industrial policy. And so whether, depending on how the future comes out, this may be very appropriate for a more intense residential or it may be appropriate for a mixed use. There has been discussion from the commission, if you want to encourage industrial along this corridor, you may look at adding industrial, but this use itself would require an industrial land use policy. And the fact that it's currently all neighborhood on different, whether it's rural or suburban or urban, it's probably not, I mean, it's got a lot of issues, but it's probably not an appropriate industrial location when you look at other alternatives in the community.
And that's my point on those three items, whether it's rural or residential, can we defer it long enough to, whatever it takes to clear up what is it? Is it rural? Is it residential? What is it in that line between Bordeaux and White Creek?
Yeah, we can do it, yeah. Commissioner Cliff?
I agree with the councilman that we probably shouldn't be voting it up or down today in light of what a change it would be with precedent, too. But I don't really think one or two meetings is quite long enough. It may be, but these are property owners who have a right to a decision, too. I would think maybe an indefinite deferral and then having heard our discussion, if the owners and proponents of this want to bring this or something else back to us, then they could, in their initiative, ask us to put it back on the.
And I can go with that and I'll change my motion to an indefinite referral.
All right. So if you would just withdraw your first motion. Pardon me, sir.
Neighborhood people that have any input in this kind of decision.
Sir, you're out of order, please. Please sit down.
I'm in charge, sir.
The public hearing has been closed, sir. Please sit down.
We should have a referral, we should have.
There's, sir, you may be removed from, sir, please sit down. Thank you. The public hearing, all right.
Doug, we get security, please.
Doug, we get security, please.
You should hold it down. You putting a tax on us, and you should notify us if we're going to have to go meet to talk about this.
Sir, you're going to be removed from the meeting.
Well, that's okay, too. I've been taken out of the pool.
All right. There's been a motion to.
Withdraw the first.
Withdraw your first motion, and now you're on.
Motion to defer it indefinitely.
All right. There's been a motion to defer indefinitely. Is there a second? To defer indefinitely? A second. There's been a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of an indefinite?
I'd like to just say something for the public's sake so there's no misunderstanding. I mean, I think the point of deferring indefinitely is to allow more public discussion and just to figure out what's going on. So to address that point, I think, I hope that helps.
That's a very good point. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion on indefinite deferral? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
One no.
Mr. Chairman, just to point out to the commission, and I know that there's several new commissioners, and it's the first time this has happened, I think, since we've had a couple of new commissioners. In accordance with your rules, the commission cannot recommend approval of a rezoning that is inconsistent with the policy unless they direct staff to amend the policy to be consistent with that rezoning. So that was, I think, some of the issue there. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that.
Thank you for the clarification. I think it's a very valid point. We are now on item number 15.
Item 15 is a request to remove a reserve status from approximately four-acre parcel located in the Bellevue area. This is just located to the east of Old Hickory Boulevard, south of I-40, and just north of Staff is recommending approval.
Hold on one second. If there's discussion, if you all could please take that out in the hallway. Go ahead.
The property is owned R-15, which is single-family and two-family.
Wait, wait, wait one second. We'll wait until everybody gets going here. Go ahead. If you'll start, if you'll start over.
Okay. So this is a request to remove a reserve status from a parcel in the Bellevue area. The property's outlined in red. It's approximately four acres in size. This is another view of the site. Staff is recommending approval. It's owned R-15, which permit duplex or single-family residential uses. As you can see, the yellow is planned unit developments, and this one parcel is left out of any planned unit development. We're not, I've searched the history on this, not quite sure why that happened, but that's how it is today. So it's out there on its own. The policy is conservation, and it recognizes the steep slopes on the site. This is the parcel, the close view. Reserve, just to give you a little history on reserve parcels today, the subdivision regulations do not permit reserve parcels, but it's something we see from the past often. You guys see them every once in a while. A lot of times, a plat will have a reserve for a specific reason. It will say that until there's water, until there's sewer, and in that case, we can approve those at administrative level. But in this case and in other cases, it does not give a reason. It just says that not a building site until it's approved by the planning commission. So with that, we require that it goes to the planning commission for the removal of the parcel, of the reserve status. So the plat was originally recorded in 1984, and it included this note. So it's a reserve parcel. The PUD includes an access easement that runs from Old Hickory Boulevard through the, through the PUD, and there's also an access or access and maintenance agreement that has been agreed to by the homeowners association and the applicant to maintain the access drive to Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff is recommending approval of the request as we do not see any reason not to.
Thank you. This item is open for public hearing. Is the applicant in the audience? You have 10 minutes, and you can reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Please state your name.
My name is Ed Attaberry, 9110 Bay Point Drive, Alberta, Alabama. I am the property owner. I've owned the property since 2008. I'll just take a moment. I'm here basically to answer your questions, and I would appreciate a chance to rebut at the end if there's any concern or confusion. Our whole intent is simply to lift the reserve. That's all we're asking to do. And I'd like an opportunity to address concerns at the end. And again, it's Ed Attaberry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You'll have two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support, please line up behind the microphone. You'll have two minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak in support? No one wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? All right. So seeing no one speaking in support, anyone in opposition that would like to speak, please line up behind the microphone. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please state your name and your address, and welcome.
Can you give me three minutes?
No, it's our policy to do two minutes, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay. My name is Willie Horniger. I'm living on 6522 Rolling Fork Drive. I have friends in Belle Forest, and they've asked me to help them, this request not to remove the reserve status from the property. And I go into some technical issues with this property. Point 11 of notes to that property say I'm citing water for the building will be accessed from an existing spring. And there is an existing spring actually coming out from a bat cave. But this water is a trickle of water and somewhat not very much more. So it cannot support water for this building. That means water would have to be brought in from Old Hickory, which would mean a large disturbance for the entire Belle Forest community. On note 11, it's also saying Lot A served by a public sewer. And I don't know whether you have still this one, Victor, from the flat here.
What are you looking for?
So there, we don't see an existing sewer to this flat. There is a sewer line certainly coming in from Belle Forest, and there is a preliminary sewer line signed up in the middle of that property up to that steep hill. And we know that Highland LCC wants to build on top of that ridge, and you will see requests from Highland LCC soon. So that means this provisional line might actually serve not this property, but something which has been, would be built in the future. And that line would connect downhill probably to the sewer line of Belle Forest. And Belle Forest sewer line is old, it has a very low capacity and cannot allow for more input. So my point two is, the homeowners association of Belle Forest has provided an access to the property. But this access, when you look here.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Annie Butler. I live at Belle Forest Condominiums, 214 Old Hickory Boulevard. I support keeping the parcel on reserve status for the following reasons. Our private access roads cannot support the heavy construction vehicles that would be needed if building were allowed on the Attaberry property. The roads are not rated for such purpose. Our community is an active, outdoors-oriented community with walkers, runners, children, and dogs. If more buildings go up, the increase in traffic would make all of these activities dangerous, if not impossible. Previous development above us, specifically the reserve, caused a deluge of water and flash flooding in our community during the, excuse me, 2010 flood. 25% of our units in our community flooded. The water flowed down the hill directly through the four-acre property in question. Clearly, this entire four-acre property is in a flood plain, although it says opposite, which is oppositely stated in Note 2 of the plat. We are just now recovering from that flood. We cannot afford to negatively impact our property values further due to destruction of the natural environment that surrounds us and protects us from future damage. The property in question is located in a critical part of the land designated Bob Brown Park by the Mayor's Open Space Program. It is also part of the future greenway between Radner Lake and the Cumberland River. We call on the owner not to build, but rather to consider donating the land for the benefit of all Nashville citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please, if y'all would please line up, that way we can go a little quicker. Thank you.
My name is Joyce Dierschke. I live in Belle Forest Condominiums at 214 Old Hickory Boulevard. I just wanted to speak quickly to the access that we did provide to this property, and I want to be clear that that access was provided under duress. Mr. Attaberry's lawyer threatened to sue us if we did not give them access, so we gave them access. She knew already that we had several lawsuits pending because of the 2010 flood, and she, we feel that she used that to kind of coerce us into giving that access that not one homeowner wanted to give. So I just want to be clear about why we gave access to this property. We don't want building there. Further to what my neighbor said, our community is located in a very natural setting. It's one of the only things we really have going for us. It's a very old complex. It was built in 1969. It has a lot of historic value to it, that whole, all of that land does, and none of it's really been explored or assessed up until now, when all this is starting to happen. And that's something we want the chance to do. Also, just to be clear, people moved to Belle Forest specifically because of the natural setting. Like I said, it's one, it's the one big thing we have as homeowners to set our property apart from a lot of the newer condos that are going up. And it's very valuable to us, not only in that respect, but just for the pure enjoyment of living there. We recognize that we're very lucky. We get to look out our doors and see deer and coyotes and turtles and wild turkeys and geese and all of that, and it's great. We open our windows and we hear the Tennessee songbirds, and it's great, and we love it, and we know we're lucky for that, and we want to keep that. And we feel that it's our right to keep that. Any development on our property or the properties around us that disturb that natural setting is just going to ruin that for us. And really, it's going to be a loss for everybody in the Bellevue community. There is a cave on the property. There are bats that live in that cave. Bats are endangered. They're, almost all of them are on the endangered species list.
Thank you.
There's also old growth trees in that property.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that's also something that's very rare in Nashville these days. There's a lot of conservation to be done on that property, and we don't want to see it built on. We want to see you guys take all that into consideration when you make a decision. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Burns. I also live at the Belle Forest Condominiums, 214 Old Hickory Boulevard, and I'm just here to support my friends and neighbors. They've got the facts down. I presented them already to you. Clearly, probably the most important one, and the thing that most of you could relate to the strongest living here in Nashville is that we were flooded in 2010. And if any of you were directly affected by that and experienced what that felt like and the helplessness and then the after-effects, and like, as I said, many, we have many homeowners that are still just recovering and getting back on their feet from that. I wish you could stand out there in the property with us right now because if you could visually see how we're surrounded by this gorgeous forest and this parcel that you're talking about taking off reserve status will just so directly impact us. We're really concerned about any type of destruction, movement of trees that is done. There's no way for it not to negatively impact us with future heavy rains and storms. It doesn't take much now for, we have seen a change in the water pathway since the flood and even more drainage problems coming from that area. There's countless other reasons why, for those of us that care about conservation, that care about beauty, but like I said, the flood issue, I would think, is something that we could at least all really recognize. We're asking you to please not approve this to be taken off reserve status.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Margot Hill. I also live at Belle Forest, 214 Old Hickory Boulevard. I actually just moved in in April, and the area and the scenery is one of the reasons that brought me to Belle Forest. It made me kind of fall in love with it. And the way I understand it, this is not necessarily to approve building on the lot yet, but it's to remove the thing saying that you can't, can't do anything with the property. And I like the property the way it is. I like the fact that there's wildlife, and I have a lab that I love to walk around the property. And she loves to chase the deer and loves to chase the squirrels, and the deer are primarily back in that area. They don't come forward onto the property much. So I just want to urge you guys to consider not to remove the reserve status, just because if you do, then there's the potential for buildings to go in and the wildlife to not be preserved as much. So as a new homeowner in the area, I just want to tell you that that's what brought me to Belle Forest, was that area. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? And we'll.
I can do a little bit of this talk. He would resign.
Yes, sir. You can bring it up here to the staff, please. Any, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Please, please come to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Virginia Daw. I am also a resident at Belle Forest Condos. I live at 214 Old Hickory Boulevard. I have lived in three different units there, and the first time I moved there from Florida, I was just blown away by its beauty. It is an older building, as Joyce has stated. If you look at the last building at the top, before you see all the trees, is where I first leased. And at the back there during the flood, I watched those condos get flooded, and it was really something to watch. And I was like watching a natural facelift of the land move. And I can't imagine what would happen if those, if any of those trees were moved. And there's deer, there's wonderful wildlife, and it's just, I think it's our responsibility to try to preserve when we can. It's just, I wish you could go and see it because the picture doesn't do it justice. It's just beautiful. And so I oppose this, and I really hope you'll think about the wildlife and just the beauty of the land. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing no other people speaking in opposition, well, the applicant, like, he's reserved two minutes for his rebuttal.
Yes, as I mentioned, we're just simply trying to lift the reserve parcel status. I've owned the property since 2008, paid the taxes timely. No one's ever contacted me.
Sir, if you'll address it.
Yeah, you're right about that. I'm sorry. The board of directors of Belle Forest is who we dealt with. We paid them money. We bought an easement, excuse me. We agreed to a maintenance agreement for the perimeter road. We've done all those things, including, as I mentioned, paying the money. The comment about the water and sewer connection, there's a new, basically unused, eight-inch line that comes right up the perimeter road. We wouldn't try to connect to the existing stuff in Belle Forest. I think there's a show cause for maintenance on that, on that part of the project. We'd be going in a different direction if we, and when we got around to designing a plan. There is no cave. There's a spring house on the property, which a previous owner built, dug out of the canyon and has used in the 50s to improve with cement and a couple other ways so that the pigs and cows didn't walk through some of the waterways, but that's a long way from. And the flood issue, I understand that happened in 2010. I also understand a lot of that happened. Perhaps county might even know better, or the metro. A lot of that was caused by poor maintenance of the ditches on their property. Many of the trees across the road, if you can look at the picture, that used to be along the spring road have since been removed to enhance the flow. That's not on my property. I'm 100 feet away from that. They did that to improve the flow of water along there. The property was cut over in the 1960s. It's not old growth. And the last thing I want to say, I offered to sell this to members or the board at one point in time when we were getting our approval.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing is closed. Now, discussion on, since Jeff, I missed you the last time, why don't we start with you first? Jeff?
Can staff walk us through previous examples of where reserve status has been removed? And obviously, this is not a policy change. This is just a unique example of where we've got a reserve status in place?
Honestly, going back, I mean, we've had some, the last one I can remember was Honestly, going back, I mean, I, we've had some, the last one I can remember was several years ago, and it was, there were two lots. It was, it was a development that had several reserve parcels. We really did not know why they're reserved parcels, but they, because they ended up having water, sewer. We speculated that maybe at the time they didn't have water or sewer, or something like that. And those had to come back to the commission. Most of the ones that I've seen are usually administrative because they do say specifically why. So, like I said, this is not something we see very often.
We get several of these a year, I would say. Probably five to 10 a year, and maybe one or two a year have to come to the planning commission because it's not stated on the plat why it was a reserve status. Generally, they're in more developed areas with surrounding, where the subdivisions have developed out around them. And like Jason stated earlier, it's because there was maybe not access to water and sewer at the time, but they developed the adjacent subdivision. And I mean, there's, there's all different kinds of reasons. You'll have another one on the next agenda, or I think there was on, there was one on the previous agenda that was a reserve status, and it didn't state why, and it was next to develop, develop subdivision. So, I mean, you see these on occasion. This one is just maybe a little bit different because it's a, it's a larger piece of property and adjacent to, surrounded by a PUD. And all of the area around it is either in the developed portion of the PUD or in open space for that PUD. So, the areas to the north and west are all permanent open space for that PUD, I believe, if my memory is correct.
And do you all know when a buyer purchases a property with reserve status, he knows that going in? It's declared on the deed?
I would say if they're doing it.
On the plat? So, he, he has full knowledge that it's got reserve status on it?
This is on the plat. So, I mean, it's, if you did your due diligence, you would see it.
That's all. Thank you.
Jessica?
I'm going to defer for a moment and listen to what everyone else has to say.
Andre?
I think that's a really important point is, we see that the property next to this to the north and to the east has residential PUD. But I want to be sure we understand what portion of the PUD that is and what the definition of it. If it is indeed earmarked as open space, not to be disturbed relative to an existing PUD, I think that colors what's happening there. And that's one thing I want to be sure about. And the other is if this has been delegated to be part of an open space of the Mayor's Open Space Plan, I think we need to be sensitive to that. If there are future plans for Greenway, I think we need to be sensitive to those things. I don't expect the owner to just happily delve, you know, it'd be great if they give it to the city, but I would think at some point there would be also a plan to purchase this property to incorporate it maybe into that future open space. So, I think since we don't know why the reserve is there, we're not really sure why we should or shouldn't take it off. And there is perhaps a bigger picture plan that's imminent, then I think we ought to leave it on until that plan can be enacted, or at least address that plan to see if this fits with it. And if it does, then we need to be careful, you know, not to take the reserve off so we don't spoil the plan that's trying to be in action. If it's not, and that doesn't happen, then perhaps we could take the reserve off later. But I don't see an urgent need to take it off now if those other issues are coming up. And when I looked at it and saw PUD, I thought, oh, my gosh, that could all be developed. But if it's a protected space not to be developed, then I don't want to be in a hurry to take off that reserve.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chairman?
If I understood, ask the owner, did you make a statement that you'd bought an easement from the homeowner association?
Yes, I did.
Come up to the microphone.
Yeah, come up here. So, how long ago was this, after you bought the property or at the time you bought it?
In 2013, we approached the Board of Directors of the Belle Forest condo association, worked with them, went out to the site, met with the board president, selected an area for the easement that was least impactful on trees, and paid for an easement and paid for road maintenance agreement. We paid to help maintain the perimeter road, actually at double the rate of any of the condominium owners. So, they, they cut that deal with us and understood that we were buying that easement. And again, all we're trying to do today is lift, lift a reserve that really we don't find on other properties around. We're just trying to lift that reserve. We're not trying to build. Planning has great guidelines on what we'd need to do if we tried to build, very strong guidelines. I'm surrounded by multifamily there. We're probably looking at one single-family house on four acres. And I think some of the objections, maybe people don't fully understand, but it's just we're talking about one house on my four acres, and I did already buy the easement.
Not to cut you off, but the question was, you know, you paid for it, and I appreciate your information on that. So, in my opinion, it's paid for access by, and worked with the homeowner association. They allowed it. They've talked about this being, this is not a sanctuary, although the people surrounding I know would like for that, you know, to remain. But the homeowner association can go back and buy this if they'd, if they'd like to keep it as a sanctuary and not keep the owner from enjoying the use of his property. It looks like the stormwater has been approved. I know that if he develops this, and I imagine if he lifted it, the next move would be to develop it, and you'd have the right to do that. But that would have to come back before this planning commission and go through the sewer department and the stormwater and the fire marshal, all those at that time. But this time, the, I don't see any exceptions from any of the departments. And like I say, you'd have to come back before here. And so, in my opinion, it, we don't know why it was reserved. As a developer, I've reserved parcels simply because didn't want to develop at that time, or there was a, utilities weren't there. And not knowing why this, it didn't say that this was reserved, a sanctuary or anything else, just said a reserved parcel. So, in my opinion, I'm going to vote that it'd be lifted.
Stuart?
I'd like to ask staff, do we, what do we, what do we know about the residential PUD that's directly next to this parcel?
It's a, it's a larger area. So, the majority of, I guess, 154 and 126 is all part of this PUD. So, that area is in the open space. So, that's basically a hillside. So, it's all steep slopes. So, that more than likely be the reason why there's not development approved on that site. So, this specific site's left out, so it's shown as a reserve. Well, you have the surrounding area that, at this time, unless the planning commission approves, the council approves another plan, developing that area, it's an open space.
Go ahead. You don't have, you don't have a copy of that plan here on, in the slot?
No, I don't.
Oh, that's good. How many units in the, in this PUD that they've got the access through?
That I do not know. I would say there's probably 150. Someone in the audience may know if that's close.
214.
No, it's 201.
And those, Jason, those are all.
Double digits, triple digits.
Those are all condominiums, and this would be developed, this would all be single-family.
Right now, the only, the property zone for single, two-family, at the most they could do today would be a duplex, so they could be detached. So, two units is the most they could do under today's, under the zoning today. Now, you know, they have enough property to come and subdivide it, which would have to be brought before you. Looking at the property, it's nothing but steep slopes and buffers that, you're not going to subdivide that property unless zoning and subdivision regulations change drastically.
So, what they could build on it if this was lifted is minimum to, in relation to what's there now? Is that correct?
A maximum under zoning, there are two units on one lot.
Thank you.
Hunter, you got, you got any more questions? Or Stuart? We're still on Stuart. Stuart?
Stuart.
Sorry.
So, just to clear up, when you say under, in the analysis, R15 would permit a maximum, and they love the lots with two duplex lots for a total of 13 units, that refers to what?
That, that's under the, the maximum you could do under the zoning, but that requires that you approve a subdivision.
Oh, okay. If we, if we approve a subdivision to the max of the zone, that the zoning would allow.
Correct.
Yeah, and you would also have to approve variances to access to public street. I mean, you have a ton of variances. Yeah, that's a little misleading. That would be a very difficult subdivision to be approved for what the zoning allows.
Right, right. So, you know, I suspect that all throughout Davidson County, this situation has occurred where, where, where folks move into a beautiful area, which perhaps is more beautiful before they moved in, and probably existing owners felt they were, they were probably upset when Belle Forest was built. And yet, we have a policy of private property and we, private property control and zoning, and an aggressive policy of open spaces and wild areas that probably, that I'm very proud of, how much we've developed in terms of, how much we've set aside for parks and greenways and undeveloped areas in the last few years. I don't think it's appropriate to expect a private property owner of a lot like this to necessarily donate to the city or pay taxes forever without any benefit of the land. I don't think that's who we rely on for the way we finance and provide our open spaces. So, if the city wanted to buy it, perhaps they should, perhaps we should. There hasn't been an effort to do that. I, I honestly think most of us would be upset if we lived at Belle Forest, which we probably would have thought, oh, well, this will always be just there. Maybe not even knowing it was privately owned and taxes paid, maybe, maybe they thought it was a city reserve. But I, I think that would be an interesting precedent for us to establish, that we, we're going to essentially deny someone the use of their property. Sorry? You want to go ahead? Go ahead. I'm done, and I'll. I'm not sure we're denying the use of their property. It's a status that was put on by a previous commission or council.
Do you think they were smarter than us?
Well, and, you know, I haven't, while maybe we don't know why not, I'm not sure I've necessarily heard why yet. You know, why should we be taking this reserve status off? We, I trust that there was good reason at one time that that was put on there. And so, and if we're going to talk about what we would do if we lived there, if I would, if I were buying the property, I would have had it lifted before I bought it as well. So, I think there's some burden of, or at least I feel a need to understand more about, A, the use of the property, you know, what, how is it going to be used? Why not bring this back to us when there's a plan, site plan, a building permit application for a single-family home, whatever it might be? And I guess, to back up a little bit, a few questions that I have is whether or not this is, you know, is part of the Greenway plan? Is it part of the Mayor's Open Space Plan? And is, I didn't quite understand the statement about the Brown Park, how that relates to this? So, you know, I, I feel like there's, that there, there is a need to show, you know, why the reserve should be lifted, you know, and why, and what is going to be built there, or what, if anything.
Lily?
I kind of have an opposite view towards the reserve status if we don't know why it was on there. I'm more inclined to take it off because we don't know that whatever reason that the reserve status was placed is still valid, or if it was really a valid reason in the first place. And also, what makes me have a little bit more comfort is the fact that if the owner were to build on the property, it would still come before us. We heard a lot about flood plains and endangered species and things like that, things that we would obviously want to talk more about, and we would have the chance to do that if there were buildings placed on the property. So, I probably would vote towards removing the reserve status.
Councilman?
No comment. I'd like to move, my interest would be either to defer it so we can get a lot more information and see if there's a chance that the city was thinking of buying it, or I don't know what the plan might be, or to, to move disapproval, sort of in that, on that same vein. So, I'm trying to decide whether to make a motion to defer or to disapprove at this point.
How many meetings?
What?
Meeting, how many meetings?
Well, I don't know. I mean, my inclination is to move disapproval, but I wanted to, I know that there's some, some of my fellows who, who are for it, so I don't want to just throw a stake in the ground too harshly. But still, I'm not sure I see, I'm sort of with Hunter, too. I don't really see why, what the compelling reason to remove it is. I mean, I see somebody wants to use their property, but it's been on there since before it was purchased. So, it's a known, known quantity at least. Hunter?
Hunter?
I, I mean, I would support a deferral for sure, given that we don't have in front of us the adjacent PUD layout. We haven't talked about the policy, and I don't know, it seems to me like if there's any kind of conservation policy in this area that would protect this and the adjacent properties, you know, I'd like to know that. I'd like to know whether this is part of the Greenway and Open Space Plan. So, I would support a deferral in order to get more of that information.
Well, I'll move that we defer, and, or go ahead.
You know, at least two meetings.
I think, no, enough time, you, I'm going to ask you how much time, but to get all that information that we're asking, I mean, to see what the overall PUD picture really is, is this designated open space that's to be protected? Which PUD does it go with? What is the open space plan? What is the Greenway plan?
Second meeting in October.
Are there other questions that we're leaving out? Are these two meetings enough?
Let's go to the, end of the third meeting, which will be the final meeting in October.
Is that okay? Till then.
I'll second that.
So, there's been a motion for a deferral of two meetings? I mean, three meetings, apologize, three meetings. There's been a second. Any more discussion?
I've got one other comment. I think this might also give the applicant the opportunity to meet with the community. And, you know, why couldn't we amend the PUD to show a single-family house on this lot if that's truly what's intended to, to be developed? And, I mean, that would be an option that would ensure, you know, what, and I have every reason to trust the owner, but, you know, it is zoned for more than one single-family home, and, well, it's zoned for two, it'd be hard to do more than two. So, I think there's an opportunity, if they take it or not necessarily, to perhaps offer, you know, an amendment to the PUD that would allow only a single-family home, or two, two homes, or whatever might be appropriate.
You've heard the motion to defer for three meetings. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
When no ayes have it to defer three meetings, we're on item number 16.
Ready? Okay, item number 16 on your agenda is a request to re-subdivide part of Lot D of Holman Heights subdivision. The request is to create two lots on property located at 5819 Maxon Avenue. It's 0.62 acres in size. The existing lot has one single-family home as well as a detached garage. Staff recommendation is to disapprove. The existing zoning of the property, as well as all surrounding property, is R8. The policy is T4 urban neighborhood maintenance. This is the proposed plat. This is the proposed plat, the subdivision. The plat would have two lots. Lot one would front on Maxon Avenue, and Lot two would front on an unimproved alley and the terminus of Newton Avenue. In looking at infill subdivisions, we do run a lot compatibility analysis. This is the analysis for Lot one. In regards to street frontage, the lot would need to have 68 feet of street frontage. It does have 77 feet, so it meets that compatibility. However, in regards to the lot size, the lot would need to be 21,344 square feet. The lot as proposed is 13,670. In regards to the compatibility analysis for Lot two, there are no lots existing to compare the lot, to compare the lot to. In summary, staff recommends disapproval based on the fact the lot does not meet the compatibility requirement.
Side item is open for public hearing. Is the applicant here? You have 10 minutes to speak, and you can reserve two minutes for your rebuttal.
Great, thank you. My name is Jeremy Kelton. I own this lot, and I would like to build, I'd like to build four houses on it. I bought it with the intention of participating with the existing zoning, which allows for one- and two-family structures to be built on it. It's a big lot. It's .61 acres, the neighborhood, which comes out to something like 26,000 square feet. The neighborhood, except for the street, is full of lots that are 7,500, 8,000 square feet. And so, when seen with the neighborhood as a whole, I believe that the two lots are very well within compatibility studies, based on what the staff's disapproval. It looks like they're disapproving it based on half of the compatibility studies, that one of the two features it doesn't meet. But those, the features that it doesn't meet are the total square footage of each lot. And I think that it would be an improvement for the neighborhood. This property is, it's been a very rough neighborhood, and have been a very rough property for the neighborhood, with tons of, well, frankly, crime's been happening on this property for a long time, and the neighbors are excited about something being done with it. And so I look, I wish I had a clear picture of where it fronts Newton Avenue at the back. There's already a nice curb cut, kind of ushering away to where these, the two houses I would like to build are going to be. And I think it'll be a big improvement for the neighborhood. So thank you, guys, for your consideration.
Thank you. You have two minutes for your rebuttal. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Please come to the microphone. State your name. Please state your name and your address. You have two minutes.
Wade Elder, and I live at 5813 Maxon Avenue with my wife. We own the property adjacent across the street, and I control a couple others as well. Brief notes, the new owner is an unrecognized hero in many eyes. The neighborhood auto traffic has already dropped by 80% or more due to his purchase. It was a bad house, bad people. So a few new houses will make no impact on any traffic, because the traffic has gone away, and it's a beautiful thing. We've endured many hardships, drugs, crime, gunfire. Be aware, the triple murder house is just a few land plats away from here, and we would like to clean up the neighborhood, basically. The new law addressing lot sizes may be very necessary in some areas, but I think it's poorly applied here, as there's two or three large lots down the street, and as Jeremy had mentioned, all the rest of them are normal, you know, quarter acre or less sized lots, which his idea would fit in very well. They've split a few lots down the street and put houses in alleys with alley access. 505 Stevenson Avenue is one, also on East Borough Drive. Denying the investor the ability to split and develop the property, provided everyone agrees with the plans, is stopping exactly what Maxon Avenue needs. We need new money, new ideas, new construction to replace the obsolete structures that are there, create opportunities that the rest of the nations in Westside is embracing. I urge you to consider and support this new investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ed Kevender. I live at 5821 Maxon Avenue. I've lived there for over 30 years. I'm one of the oldest people in the neighborhood. Originally, when I moved there, that was a fairly nice house, but over the years, it became a bad neighborhood. It's since the gentleman bought the house that it's improved the neighborhood considerably. I would like to see new houses in the neighborhood. In fact, if, when I moved in, we did have an alley. I know the man said something about the unimproved alley in the back. When I moved in, I had an alley behind my property. There was a development went in called Newton Court. When it went in, the developer pushed a part of the rubble into what was my alley, so I don't have an alley behind my property anymore. At the time, I could drive my tractor in and out behind my property, but, and this property had a nice garage at the backside of it. But we would like to see this property redeveloped, new houses on it. It would improve the neighborhood, make everything better for us who lived there for many years. Appreciate y'all's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Holly White. I live at 5811 Maxon Avenue, so I'm about two doors down from the property we're discussing. I moved to Nashville nine years ago, and I specifically chose to move to West Nashville because of the development. I bought my house eight years ago, and as my neighbors have said, we've all gone through a lot on that street. West Nashville is going through a great redevelopment, and everybody knows that. It started with Sylvan Park. That's where I lived when I moved to West Nashville. And then it moved to the Nations, which is now historic West Nashville. And it's moved back to Centennial, where all of these new developments are going in. And as a resident of Maxon Avenue, I want to be a part of this, and quite frankly, just because of a little indiscretion in lot size, we shouldn't be left out of this. We should be a part of it, because, I mean, if you go to Nashville West, you have Nashville West Shopping Center, you have Hillwood. So if you don't give us the chance to develop our properties and get some new housing and some new income there, you're going to have a hole. And I just, I think that it should be a great idea to let these people develop their land. Let us be a part of what's going on in West Nashville. That's why we moved there. That's why we want to be there. It's a great neighborhood. We just need a little bit of a push, a little bit of help, to get everybody where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pete Proster. I live at 4931 Danby Drive. I'm the Realtor, worked with Mr. Kelton to acquire the property. Prior to acquisition, I had numerous hours invested in due diligence down at the Planning Commission, talked to Metro Fire Department, talked to Stormwater. Everyone, after numerous visits, which I'm glad I could even get on the schedule down there to see them as busy as they are, said that they did like what we were proposing. They did not see, obviously, you know, initial meetings saying that they did not see any challenges as long as we met their requirements. This was on three occasions. It came down to planning three different separate occasions. Jeremy went down there himself on occasion, and no one seemed to have any pushback whatsoever. Of course, we don't have any official, anything officially submitted to them. Now we do, but they seemed to think, as long as we could meet what they had asked us to do, they would support this. I then went to Councilman Baker, and he actually has the plot planned, he has the plans. Councilman Baker said that he would be in favor of what we are asking the commission to approve. Now, he was supposed to be here today. I do not know what happened. And so, I'd like to say that I looked at Maxon, and when I told Councilman Baker that it's been a maintenance neighborhood, he was somewhat surprised, given the age of a lot of the homes and the condition of the homes in the area. So I'm sure that's an issue that he may be addressing at some point when I meet with him again, because he does like what we want to do. I would ask that the commission respectfully approve what we've asked for and help that community over there, Charlotte Park, Crowley Wood. I think the neighborhood deserves a chance, and I would ask the commission for an approval on what has been submitted for the subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Two minutes for rebuttal? Oh, no rebuttal. It's been all affirmative. So we'll declare the public hearing closed. And Mr. Chairman?
There's an access, I asked the staff, there's going to be access off of Maxon and one off of Newton.
Correct.
So they're separate, they're not built one behind the other. And it appears that, I know what your qualifications are on the lots, the 70%, but it looks like that the lots immediately to the east, and I'm not sure what street those face, there's not a name on here, but that they would be close to the same size as when these are subdivided in square footage. It's along Level Street, but the ones immediately to the east, there's about four lots there. And although this access off of Newton Avenue goes across an alley, there's many cases that we're building houses on alleys. I just completed two on Marlboro Court, right off of Chesterfield in the West Nashville area, that were $400,000 houses that were built on an alley. So this is a gentrifying area, I think that's going to be the next Nations as it comes out to the west, and that this is a good example of what can start that gentrification. So I'd be in favor of this. Stuart?
So the staff's conclusion was that by our regulations, this did not meet the comparability standard.
Correct. For Lot one, the regulations outline which lots you look at for compatibility, and Lot one did not meet it in regards to size. For Lot two, there aren't actually any lots that meet our standard to be used for compatibility.
Right. But the lot that we can measure is contrary to our subdivision regs.
Correct.
Adopted by...
It's contrary to the standards that the commission set forth, and that, but your standards allow that to be presented to the commission to determine if it's harmonious in that lot area.
If we met, if it's harmonious. So we've adopted the standards, but we gave ourselves some discretion.
You acknowledge that there might be unique circumstances that come into play?
Such as no opposition and...
Andrew?
So remind me, and maybe for some of the newer commissioners, if a subdivision comes in, meets all the subdivision regs, do we even see it? Or does it, it can be approved and administered?
No, you can't administer it.
Okay. So we only see the oddball cases, I guess, you know, and this is a little bit of an unusual situation, but it again, and I'm glad we have the discretion, because, again, if you look at, look at the big map here, you know, 90% of the neighborhood is platted at, you know, small, probably 50-foot lots. And then there's this big, you know, area that is, you know, six or seven lots in a row there that are much larger, that are uncharacteristic of the neighborhood. And yet, if you apply our standard to it, on lot comparability, they probably, you know, it would be tough to subdivide some of those because of the adjacent parcels. So I think this is a unique condition. I think this is, this area appears to be an opportunity to really match the rest of the neighborhood, more so. So, you know, when I first saw this, it looked like a house only on an alley, which I know we've done some of, and there's certainly the sort of detached dwelling unit model in historic neighborhoods, which is popular, but it seemed like we were just sticking a house on the back of this lot, but with the frontage there at Newton Court and the unusual sort of collision of subdivisions there, I think this makes plenty of sense.
Lily?
Really, my only question was our discretion under the subdivision regulations, and that's already been covered, so I'm fine.
Councilman?
I concur with our chairman. I think this is a, this is a project that's worthwhile, so I support it.
Well, just to help us feel good, too, I thought if we did look at Newton Avenue and looked at compatibility of those existing lots that are along Newton, assuming Lot two could be considered part of Newton, if we were going to do that, I think we'd find the lot size might work. That's one observation. And then I wondered at some point if we could talk to Public Works about improving that alley to the west of Newton and opening it back up again. I'd like to move that we approve this site division as it's proposed.
There's been a motion, and is there a second? Second? Any other? With the conditions?
Right. Right, with the, with the conditions that the staff called out. Right, yeah, we had a couple of conditions that if it was approved in regards to the setback on Maxon Avenue, as well as complying with Stormwater comments.
And those are the conditions?
Correct.
Okay. And Stuart?
Yeah, I actually, despite being a little facetious a minute ago, I agree with this process, that in these kind of situations, the staff should not have the authority, sole authority, to just approve it, even though it's contrary to our regs, but that we should based on what we hear. This is a very different situation than some things we saw in Green Hills, where it simply wasn't compatible. This is the right process, and this is a good example of one that should be approved, even though it was contrary to the reading of the regs. So I support them.
So there's a motion and a second, and there's more discussion? Yes?
I guess the condition number two makes me ask the question, wouldn't they have to comply with subdivision regulation, all subdivision regulations anyways?
Correct.
So our approval of this, they still have to comply with all the regulations?
Correct.
Which brings up, sorry, another question. Sidewalks, are they required to build a sidewalk or contribute to the sidewalk fund?
Not even that.
Not even?
Yes, they would be required, unless they're, and I have to look at this one to see if there's adjacent sidewalks, but I don't think there are adjacent sidewalks on here, so if there's not sidewalks next door, they would be able to pay into the in-lug fund.
And required to pay into the in-lug.
Right.
Right. And so that would apply to both of these lots.
Correct.
Thank you.
Possibly, I don't think it's going to be requiring sidewalks on the alley, but they probably will have to upgrade that and maybe even give, that's probably about a 10- or 12-foot wide easement. In most cases, when you're building on these, Public Works is requiring that to be 20-foot additional land given, and that improves, so that may be in lieu of the sidewalk, so.
Any other discussion? There's been a motion, second, to approve with staff conditions. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Recommendation passes. We're on item number 21. Hunter? Historic zoning? Any reports?
I wanted to just raise a, another issue that the Historic Zoning Commission has been challenged with recently with regard to SPs that have been approved and historic zoning overlays. There have been a number of SPs, and tonight, specifically one of the conditions. It was important to the Historic Zoning Commission staff, and to me, that it's clear to this body that when we are approving SPs and historic zoning overlays, and if our legal counsel could correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, the Historic Zoning Commission has authority to determine bulk regulations, height, mass, in both directions, right? I mean, they could, they could exceed what the base zoning or an SP zoning might allow, or they could allow less. And so there have been a number of examples of where the Historic Zoning Commission has been challenged because the SP that was approved doesn't seem to follow the guidelines, you know, in terms of mass and bulk, and so they're put in a position where, you know, they may have to actually reduce what the developer may have sort of... what the developer may have sort of the, at least the appearance that they're entitled for more than they really are. So, it's put, put the Historic Zoning Commission in a tough situation, but that's their job too. So, but it's real important, I think, for us to understand as the SPs come through that are in the historic zoning districts, that I think it's important for the Historic Zoning Staff to be chiming in specifically and helping out, helping and work with the planning department as you're reviewing the SPs.
Thanks, Hunter.
If I can speak to that?
Absolutely. Mr. Sloan?
Is that, we do try to do that, but the challenge quite often is to get the historic to tell us at that stage where they are regarding the bulk regulations. And I think we're all working towards, towards doing a better job of that because we're all talking and we understand that it's important that when a developer leaves one of those meetings early on, that it's not just the planning department talking about what policy it would allow and, or what the current zoning might allow, but it's also important that the other departments go ahead and chime in then, so that as they move forward, they know what other regulations, what other hurdles that they might encounter. And we do this with MDHA as well. All the different departments, whether that is historic or whether that's planning, when it's in a redevelopment district, we try to, even though we're over at MDHA and we're discussing really the guidelines that MDHA may have that they're applying, that we, the historic's there as well, and both departments try to chime in as early as possible to tell them that. So, we're all trying to, trying to make a better effort at telling them those things on the front end.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
And thanks, Doug. I agree with you and I appreciate that. And there may be times too, and I know we've done this before, when we've asked historic staff to be here at the meetings in those situations to answer questions from the commissioners as well, so, thank you.
Thank you, Hunter. Rick?
Yeah, just to one thing, where there's a workshop at your next meeting, on the September 25th meeting, there's a workshop that precedes that meeting. And this is a particularly important one. This is an opportunity for us to go over the preferred future with you as a result of this and some of the implications and impacts on community plans. And so, you know, if, we'll be obviously calling around to see who's going to be there, but if we can't have a lot of people there, we may want to have a different time because this is, this is maybe more than any other one. This will set the tone for the actual plan that comes forward. And so, we really do want, you know, input from the commissioners before we begin the process with the community.
Thank you, Rick. There's, I don't have anything for Parks. Councilman, anything going on?
Yeah, I'm sure we finally got, with the help of the planning staff, we finally got both bills, 7701, 770, the contextual overlay as well as the duplex bill completed, well, at least passed. And it was...
Was it fun?
It was fun. At the end, it was a lot of fun, but the good thing about it was that we were talking to both sides and I let them know that if there could make it better, there was something in those bills that could be enticed and maybe make it better for both sides, that hopefully, they are continuing to work, continue to talk, and they come up with something that's pleasing to both sides, I'd be happy to amend it, so, I swear on heaven. But it was good.
Mr. Chairman, anything else you want?
Yeah, I want to address the comparability that we just went through. I know that we did that exercise and rightfully so because of a lot of lots that were being, cases that were being abused in the Green Hills area mainly. But, if you look at the areas surrounding this, we did the correct thing, but it was comparable to other lots that probably, if this wasn't an alley, we would cut those off also. And, I don't know, I don't want to put a lot of work on the staff, but there may be that we need to go back, not look at necessarily specific areas, but have some verbiage that says that in these cases, I think that we go from across a block face and in some cases, that's not what the characteristic of the neighborhood is, so, so we don't have to maybe quander with ourselves that do we do, do we approve this or don't we based on the regulations that we've established, that we come up with, look at this, relook at it. I'm not sure how it ought to be done, but I think in a lot of these cases, it's proved tonight that there are unique cases where there's four or five lots that aren't characteristic of neighborhood that we have to compare it to. If you really compared it to the other area going to the east and north and south on this, that would more than exceed the comparability. So, I'd just like to make, maybe, let's look at that.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I think the chairman has a really good point and perhaps part of the question, or the question for the staff is how are the new guidelines working? Because we're not seeing the ones that are being approved. And so, we're just seeing, I want to call it the oddball ones, right? So, it would be interesting to know, and I don't know if that can be answered tonight necessarily, but if the intent of the changes that we made to the subdivision regs around comparability, if we're achieving what we intended to achieve.
I think it is working actually very well. Y'all are seeing a very small number of the applications that are coming in. The vast majority, I think is what Bob just referred to it as, are being done administratively. And we looked at these things. We looked at whether it was one block face, two block faces, was it just this block face or do you use both sides of the streets? We looked at different ways of analyzing it before we presented the guidelines that we've, that we did present and that you passed before. And we can go back and look at those same things again, but I don't know that it really will have changed. I think it's been very successful overall and it is the extraordinary exception that ends up here.
And we also work with those people that we think the commission might, I mean, we can look at those the same way you're talking about them. Is this something the commission's likely to look at favorably? Obviously, we can't commit there, but I mean, there are situations like this that have very unique circumstances. It would be something the commission historically has felt was reasonable and that's why we encourage them to come to the commission.
Right.
Even though we can't recommend approval.
Yeah, to Rick's point is that we, like tonight, sometimes encourage applicants to come here because we believe that it's harmonious with the, with the greater area, but that's really the commission's discretion. And sometimes we tell them, no, we discourage them from doing that because we don't feel like it is and that if they came, that we would be zealous in our support of the guidelines.
Thank you, Ms. Sloan. Stuart?
I get the irony of the discussion because it's these kind of, sort of, interesting dilemmas that led us to essentially take away the earlier standards and, and this, this does work, I think. I think, I think it's the right result, but I understand why we all agreed at one point that, well, let's just not worry about comparability and if it's, yeah. But this, this seems to be a working compromise.
Thank you. Chairman, and then we'll have our councilors. We have our legal team over here.
I just wanted to note, Mr. Vice Chairman, on these cases where you explore the possibility of harmonious development and harmonious standards as being the basis by which a project might be approved, it's very helpful, as we did see tonight from this commission, to articulate some pretty specific bases for that determination. I appreciate the commission tonight, having gone through some very specific points, which helps my office an awful lot in the unlikely event that we find ourselves in Chance Record trying to explain how the commission got where they got on a decision. Hunter, in particular, your comments tonight articulating some of the specific points for that last project were very helpful. And it's a great reminder for all the commission members that if we're going to go down that road, articulating the specific bases for your decision is extremely helpful to the commission and ultimately to upholding any decision that's made here.
And that was articulated in itself. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I want to compliment you on the, your chairmanship tonight. You did a great job. But, I'm going to have the last word adjourned.